All right, so we'll call our first regular meeting of council for 2024 to order at 6:03 PM. And I will start out with our landing announcement statement. The town of Culvers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. Many of the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land, as well as all indigenous peoples who have helped shape and continue to strengthen our community. So moving on, what's the adoption of the agenda? So is there any objection to the agenda as presented?
No objection.
Thank you. So we'll just keep moving on then. We have no public hearing today. And then in terms of the adoption of the previous minutes, is there any objection to the December 19th, 2023 regular minute meeting of council minutes as presented?
No objection.
Excellent, thank you. Moving right along to our first item, which is under staff reports. And this is the Clean Energy Improvement Program Administration report. I'm going to ask administration to provide a little bit of information on this. We do have the information in front of us. So we'll start with that and then we'll go for questions if there's anything from council.
Sure. So thanks Mayor Montana. Mr. Patsy did up this staff report, so I'm gonna turn this over to him to give a proper explanation of this.
Thank you. So to purpose, I participated in a presentation through or from ABUNIS that goes over the program and use some of their literature to get that information. The Clean Energy Improvement Program, or CEP, allows property owners to make green investments in their homes. So they're solar panels or improve furnaces, windows, doors, that kind of thing. They can increase the efficiency of their homes. And so, and then allow them to fund that over a period of time by paying it through their property taxes. The first step to get this moving is to pass a bylaw. The ABUNIS asked the program administration creator for this, and they would help produce a bylaw that meets the program that the municipality wants to wants to figure out in their municipality. And then the town has to source the funds. This is where this was prior to the information. Initially, we believe that the program is funded through the province, and the town had collected the funds and passed it on back to the province. But through the research and maintenance report, they learned that most local authorities program for the province, or whether through another financial institution. And then I listed here kind of responsibilities of what the town would then have to do once it's up running, which is to make sure that people who want to apply meet the program requirements, get them to actually make the agreement, and then kind of helping them get through that program and working with the ABUNIS to facilitate the construction on their home and then getting the contractors pay the and then also marketing the program to the municipality and to the property owners here. I then included a list of kind of pros and cons of their financing options. I won't go through all of those right now, but there's pros and cons to each type. And I think the biggest difficulty in doing a loan or a venture is that we don't know the uptake on a program like this. And so if we were to borrow, let's say a million dollars, we have to start paying that back right away. Like you would if you purchased a car, you have to start paying the loan right back. And so if there's no uptake, then the town would have to start making those payments without having anyone to fund it. And you would only be paying the amounts that someone is spread out over their over the tax bill, like how many years that might go for. Twenty-five years, five years, was it like this kind of some of those parameters? And then the interest rates kind of depending on the type of financing can be varying or fixed and just determining what those look like. There is an option to blend the financing types depending on what, how that would like to go. But then there's also, what's not mentioned here is just the resources internally to manage this program where that's, it's we, the town ends up becoming a lender for this program as well. So there's pros and cons to the program, there's pros and cons to the financing options, but it's a way that property owners can make those accrues for a home if they like. But it's, it's an interesting program.
It puts the municipality in a position of being the bank essentially, without the financial resources. So somehow we'd have to come up with that administrative, create the contractors, et cetera, et cetera. It's not as slick and quick as it was first anticipated it would be. And of course, one of us are bankers. So it would, it's a bit outside of our administrative realm. And in discussions about this, we thought there are certainly other plausible alternatives for a homeowner including like home equity loans, that kind of thing through an actual bank who does this kind of stuff for a living, right?
I guess, yeah, that was my initial take on this was that we seem to be taking the risk in doing all of the work. And yet we can't set it how we wish it to be. We're following direction from someone who doesn't have any investment in this or doesn't have any risk associated with this at all. And yet we have to create a program based on their model and whatever rules that they have. That makes me a little bit nervous on the offset, but I'm wondering, so is there any other information? Like, can people partner if they get federal grants? Can, would this cover, could we do this to cover their portion? I guess, what else did I? Is there a maximum amount that we can do? Is there, like what is tax time? And then I guess I just wonder, what's this trap tax credit? It says here, so we verify, so we vet applicants, we prepare and execute the financing agreement. We record and collect clean energy improvement tax. So do we record and we're required to then report to the province? Are residents paying money back to us?
The, and that one is we record how much they have on the program and we collect those taxes. It's, and then it goes back into, it's weird collecting the taxes because it's all into the person's tax roll. It's like a local improvement. Whereas if we, you know, pave their road or do something and they, and they pay for it right on their property, same kind of, it's directed to that single property. We collect it, we either, if it's funded by reserve, we keep the money. If it's funded by somebody else, then we make those payments out of it.
I apologize. So when we're saying it's a tax credit, then they just pay it when they pay their taxes? There's no monthly payments on this?
Well, it could be a monthly payment program if that's how they pay their property taxes.
But if they don't, can we set it up as a monthly payment program? Or we have to follow the processes set forth by the province?
It would follow, it would follow our property payment guidelines, right?
Correct. It's considered, it would be considered property taxes. And so it would follow all the same parameters that follow under the property taxes. So if they wanted to pay monthly, they can, they can either sign up for the tip program or they could just make payments every month and just since has a credit on their account each year. But, and so there's, how they, how a particular person wanted to manage that, their property taxes would vary on that. There are, you know, options to say that if you are going to go on this program, in our bylaw, you could say, you must join the tip program. So you are paying monthly or, you know, things like that. And it's, it's a, those kind of parameters can be drawn.
That's a tough one because a lot of people use their taxes that they get back to help pay their property taxes. So to say to someone, in order to take part in this program, you have to pay like $200 a month in the tip program plus make this payment then of the $10,000 or whatever it is that you use. Like it feels like it's, it feels like it's not a very successful model. It feels like there's barriers that.
These kind of things would be up to, up to council in drafting that bylaw. Like it's a, it's a, administration would work with ABUNIS to bring something together, but council would have the final approval of what that bylaw looks like and then those kind of parameters.
Um, we'll see if there's any other questions from council.
Sorry. I am sorry.
That's okay. Councilor Potry, did you have a question?
Sure, yeah. So, so with the bylaw, then you're saying we set the parameters about how we want the program to run. So I guess what part is upper municipalities doing then?
I'll pick us.
Yes, they do have a part where they are kind of, so they, they find the contractors. They have, they have a list of, a list of contractors who they can, who they work with. The way it works is, is we would then send them, you know, we send them a chunk of money to say, okay, here, here's, this person's doing this project. And here is $30,000 for putting solar panels up. And then we give that money to ABUNIS. They hold it and then they pay the contractor. So we are paying the contractors directly, we're paying ABUNIS and they're dealing with the contractors silently.
So if they find good deals, we can recover some of those funds back to the property owner? I apologize, sorry.
Well, I presume you would have a quote or you would take out a long word.
Yes. But I think, but I think the question on that then is, is that, sort of, you know, like the, what is that called, public numbers or whatever? If they have large numbers, then maybe prices go down for work or and supplies, yes, scale, thank you. Like I guess that's kind of what, depending on uptake. Yeah, I, yeah.
Councilor Lawrence, did you have a question on this at all?
Um, not a question, I guess, just maybe a comment.
Sure.
Um, yeah, so I guess since this came by the first time, the program, I've had a chance to talk to a few people about it and it's certainly an interesting program. This update is interesting too because it really puts a lot of, I think it's quite onerous for administration. But right now, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's just an update and no motion or action is required. So I think for right now, like it sounds like a lot of work for administration who are already having a lot to do. And as mentioned by the CAO, there's already other programs for homeowners to go through in order to access funding for solar improvements or other green improvements. So I'm still, I'm still not completely convinced on this. But at this time, I guess we don't need to decide anything anyway, if I'm understanding it correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just, I just have a question of, have we actually been approached by anybody? Like, has anyone come into the office or spoken to any of us about wanting to utilize this program?
I'm not aware of.
Okay.
Well, I have personally anyway.
Within, one of our residents?
Yes.
Yes.
So I've had a resident approach, I mean, not specifically about this program, but there's other programs out there where, where the municipality supports people in, you know, sort of green products for their home, right? But that was, that was prior to this coming along. It was because the process to get the grants from the federal government was very, very onerous for them and they were really struggling to get it done. And so they approached and said, is there anything the municipality may be doing? And at that time, there was other projects that were being run through municipalities and there was other ones in our neighborhood that were doing it. And I don't know what it's called, actually. But I don't know if it's, I wouldn't mind just doing a little bit of snooping about because I am in support of this kind of program. I really am. It just, it feels like, yeah, it becomes quite onerous, marred.
Well, when Mike and I spoke, if I'm right, to the mayor, I realized that, as you know, upper municipalities would assist with the contractor, et cetera, but we're actually financing the projects. What if there's a problem with the project? Are we gonna get caught in the middle of this payment between a contractor and the client? And as many upsides as there is to this, there's a lot of downsides to this as well from our perspective. I feel we've given it out.
Great. If there's no further questions, thank you for the report. It was excellent information. Okay, so we'll just move right along here to the next item on our agenda, which is under bylaws and policies. So the first that we have here is the fees and rates bylaw. So we do have some additional information that was provided with the administrative report as well as the bylaw. So again, I will just turn this over to administration to provide any additional information on this that might be helpful for us.
Sure, thanks Mayor Montana. So council had this before them at their committee of the whole meeting in December, as everyone is aware. And then at the December 19th council meeting, the bylaw was up for discussion and consideration. And there was, the first reading was approved and then there was a motion to amend in advance of the second reading, which would require the removal of the penalties that were installed in the bylaw for not having a permit. Those were removed and motion was passed that the penalty for failing to get a permit, we said, two times the original permit cost plus the outcome will be required to pay the original permit fee. So administration has removed that original schedule, which we have currently posted on our website, and instead replaced it with two very simple clauses. The commencement of development of a permit, double the permit fee, post-construction waiver, double the permit fee is penalties in addition to the original permit or waiver fees. So that entire schedule was removed and replaced with this based on council's motion for second reading. This particular bylaw was not given third reading if there was not unanimous consent to give that third reading at that December council meeting. There also was a motion put on the floor that administration review the penalties for consideration and inclusion into the rates and fees bylaw. So I took the opportunity to provide counsel and I apologize for the sloppiness, but because I was copying and pasting, everyone's formats are different. I did provide some samples from Cole, Dale, Taylor, McGrath, Raymond and Claire's home. And a number of them, as you'll see, are actually double the permit fee, double the permit fee, permit fee double. Just as some further background to that. So at this particular time, this bylaw was given second reading as amended on December 19th and awaits council's consideration of further amendments or third reading.
Great, thank you. We'll see if there's any questions on, on the information provided to us at this point in time. Go ahead.
Thank you, CAO patients for providing these, or whoever did it, providing these comparables from other municipalities. I was just curious, were these, were these the ones that were available and publicly available, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's on their websites.
Yeah.
Okay. So there was some I could not find. But I found five and I thought maybe that was sufficient to kind of relative comparison.
Thanks. Is there any further questions on the information? If there's not, would anybody like to make a motion for third reading or to make a different motion?
I'll move that with your third reading by law 449-23, the 2024 fees and rates bylaw.
Okay. Um, is there any questions on the motion? So.
I do, I do have a question, sorry. That bylaw number, is that the original bylaw that we looked at or is that the amended? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to look through it quickly here. Is that the amended?
44923 is that your reference?
Yeah, 44923.
So that's the same bylaw number, it was just amended, so it doesn't give any number, just amended the progress.
Okay. And can we just please take a look at the amended piece again, please? Can you just give us a quick rundown of the amendment that we made on the last?
So yeah, the amendment made at the last council meeting was the removal of the development plan and development penalties.
Okay, thank you.
Instead, it was replaced with the ones you see in there currently.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
All right, if there's no further questions on the motion, Councilor Potry has made motion that council give third reading to bylaw number 449-23, the 2024 fees and rates bylaw. Now, would anybody like to speak to this motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Montana. I do think that revising the fees for development permits is in line with what we're seeing in the region. So I support the fees and rates bylaw as presented.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I will recite the motion again. So Councilor Potry has made motion that council give third reading to bylaw number 449-23, the 2024 fees and rates bylaw. I'm now going to call for the vote, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna now move on to the community center policy. And so again, you will see that we do have that in front of you. With additional information, again, provided by CAO. Thank you very much for that information in here. Again, I will turn it over to administration to provide any additional information, if you have any.
Thanks, Mayor Montana. So as I explained in the, in the RFD for this particular, or the staff report for this particular policy, this, this policy you see in front of you is the same policy that was presented on December 19th and at the committee of the whole, or pardon me, I want to make sure I got that correct. The December 12th committee of the whole, actually Mayor Montana put a motion forward that was approved recommending council and maybe receive feedback from the public and revisit the draft of January 2nd meeting of council, which is why it's back here. And I have had some email back and forth with our Parks and Rec committee. But I have still, as of today, not received any written comments or considerations for us to review and look at potential revisions. So the policy you see before you is that same policy that was before you was under 12th committee of the whole. And certainly we're happy to work with our local groups to make sure this works for everybody. And again, our previous policy did not allow for donations for fundraising events. However, we were, had approved donated use, funded our tree tents. So really walking a number of fine lines here, trying to A, increase the revenues, especially from outside sources for our community hall, and B, still find the ways to allow our local groups to use it at no cost or low cost on weekends. So it is before you for consideration and I'm happy to take council's direction on where they'd like to go with it. It would have been nice if I had those comments that we could have looked at potentially revision to this to satisfy some of those concerns. Currently, the only one that I'm aware of that came through an email was that being a nonprofit, they were concerned about pigment. And I would assume for those weekend ones because that was the only.
And sorry, if I might, like when I was reading through this, it says local charitable organization, which I thought it meant that it had to be a charity, but then within the definition it says it includes charitable organizations, nonprofits and societies.
Correct.
So I wondered if that was the same concern that they had, if that was a concern that I had initially until I understood that.
But do our, are all of our groups nonprofits, societies, or?
Well, part, I know Parks and Mission is nonprofit and most, I think most would be. Like, I know 55 pluses and the friends of ZS's, but you can look them up on the registry and there's a list of all three of them.
I think most of the groups, if I might, that we deal with do fit into that definition, which is why it was written that way. And it was to maintain that opportunity for local groups, not just any nonprofits. And so it was further defined under the donations as for external group of council representation on their boards that may utilize the hall from time to time. Well, those green acres as an example, where we have an appointed council member on that board even though they're not a local board. So we tried to stretch it into that too, so. As nice as it would be to get this passed, I'm certainly open to giving some additional time to deal with those concerns. It's taken a while to get this into position. And I would like to get to a place, the fee schedule was probably first and foremost, because we're already getting requests for summer weddings, et cetera. We've been telling them to date, we won't be able to give you the fee until such time as council passes that. So that was certainly a good head start for us. As far as this goes, you council members may know more than I do in terms of what those other concerns or if there are any concerns on what they may be. And of course, the holidays are challenging times, getting groups together, look at these things. So I'm happy to take your direction from here.
Thank you. I'll go to council and ask if there's any questions.
I have, you kind of touched on it a little bit, CAO patients, but the local affiliate charitable organization, when I read that kind of definition on its own, I was, I was a bit, I was, I was trying to understand what it meant. And I think you kind of explained it though, that it's, it's meant for, yeah, like forest or green acres or something, or they're a nonprofit society, you know, site of holders.
So. Well, it might be an association, LGA, for instance, you know, has used our hall from time to time, barely, but just the same. So yeah, the administration is a member, Cardaleen is a member of the Clerks Association of Alberta. And if they wanted to come here and do an event, then they would fall under that same category. I think the issue really is revolving around the costs of the hall for use from the Friday 6:00 PM to Sunday 4:00 PM window for our local groups.
Go ahead.
I think it's important to go to, this conversation's happened for a long time about where, how far do we support our local groups and when do we look at sort of revenue generation? Right? And we recognize that there's not a lot of revenue that's generated by these bookings. They really sort of pay our janitorials down, they pay our utilities and not much beyond that. And so prioritizing people that are coming in to book for weddings may not always be the best use of that space. I guess, I, I know that we have a local group that loves to do family movies and they're like once a month and they're Friday nights in that space. So do we then say that we're gonna do an exception every Friday night? Or does it then give us the ability to say, you know what? You get bumped because we have a wedding that wants to come in and book. Right? I mean, and, and this is, you know, we have, you know, 30 families or 40 families and all their children showing up. And is that of less importance than, you know, that minimal revenue that we generate?
Councilor Barnes, I see that you have your hand up?
Thank you, I just have a few questions about, about the thing. I know you guys had a discussion on December 12th and I had a chance to watch it on YouTube, but just a few further questions. And I, and I will say too, I agree with what Councilor Caldwell is saying in regards to balancing the revenues versus the donations. And I think that's a really valid point. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, so in the definitions, it defines major events and then it lists a few. I'm just wondering, does it need to include that list of events? Or should it just talk about a major event and then should it also include minor events? Because sometimes events are open to the entire public, but they don't draw out with 100 people. And then as well, under general policies, it doesn't include the reference to the ability to fill out the fillable form on the app?
Thank you.
So if I might, under reduced rate bookings, I have installed a clause. And again, these are all for consideration. Remember, this was a complete rebound of all of our existing policies. And I think five, in fact, it stated in there that May 1st to September 30th availability can be confirmed 60 days in advance for a single day reduced rate bookings. And it also suggested, and the entire thesis of this redevelopment come from a motion from, I believe it was actually Councilor Potry back in February 2023, to deal with the issue of bumping of local groups' bookings, right? And so I tried to separate what I considered a major event from just a regular. I tried to separate what I considered a major event from just a regular booking, um, which might have been for a oh, I don't know, let's say a meeting, let, let's use meeting as an example. So we, I had suggested under donated policies, and, and again, I spent a great deal of time on this, but I'm not saying it's perfect. I suggested that, um, that we reserve the right to adjust the date or time slots for donated bookings to allow regularly scheduled paid bookings by local, and it's always in the definitions, local charitable organization, school providers who are providing community programming and events open to the entire community. Um, and in that case, a minimum of fourteen days notice would be given to those who have a donated booking, the requirement to change. I'm not sure that these exactly deal with deal with those major bookings. And, and really, I, I think when I use movie night is probably the prime example of a Friday night booking. And perhaps that sixty days, maybe we can look, and again, without seeing their written comments, perhaps that sixty day window could be used for an event like a movie night by stating, and I don't have it in here currently, that we, if we can give sixty days notice of a a weekend booking to this place, like a Friday night only booking, would that be sufficient enough for them to reschedule those events and still allow us to get the weekend booking? And then Friday before Friday after could be utilized for movie nights when we don't have that full weekend thousand dollar paid booking? So that's certainly something we could consider in here. Um, but if it's also payment, then council needs to consider that under this proposed, and again, draft policy, I am proposing like a fifty percent fee reduction for local groups for that Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, uh, Sunday till Sunday evening time slot. But I think Mayor Montana made a point at the last meeting saying that we don't have a rec department. And in many ways, Parks and Rec, for instance, is fulfilling some of those requirements or desires of council. So I guess it falls down to the question of, does, does this hit the target? Um, certainly, the goal is not to cause any economic hardship to our local groups or dissuade them from putting on large events. Um, unfortunately, previously, our policies weren't being followed correctly, which makes this look, I think, a whole lot more uh, heavy-handed than perhaps it is in real life. Because as I said, the previous policy didn't allow any donated bookings for fundraising events. So now there's a there's sort of a path that's been laid for groups to get those free bookings for those events. So by us changing this to say it will give you a fifty percent reduction for like a Saturday fundraising event, it looks like we're being heavy-handed. In fact, what we've done is actually given half of that where previous policy didn't allow any. So there's gotta be some give and take in here. And again, I'm just the author. Uh, this really is a council policy. I really want council to be happy with this, and I want the groups to be happy with it. And so much as, you know, everyone can work with it and it has some positive attributes for both sides.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Barnes, you have your hand up. So did you have an initial question?
Um, I actually, just one last question. Thank you. That answered some of my questions. Um, I was, I was just wondering, so it talks about, um, no group shall have exclusive use of the space. And I know this is something that we're, we're discussing further in the agenda, but currently, F C S S does have exclusive use of the space. Um, and so I, I guess we, we probably want to deal with that in some way or another because our practice isn't lining, aligning with the policy at this time. Um, and I would feel that we want F C S S to be permanent and feel permanent um, and increase their service levels in town and, and not be competing with others for their space. And so, um, that is just something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Yeah, can I address that, Mayor Montana? Um, you're absolutely correct, and uh, a student picking that particular piece up. That actually came from the old policy. And when I saw it there, I, my thought was exactly the same. Um, since, and, and obviously, you will have F C S S's lease agreement later on in your agenda. Um, in discussions with their, their director, um, we do, we believe we actually have the ability to be able to work with F C S S in a limited capacity, and I state that very staunchly, um, for, you know, one or two of our other local groups to utilize that space for their meetings as well, which would take the exclusivity out of the use of that space, which is why I left it in there. Uh, plus, I think it's pertinent to the rest of the facility as well. So um, we are hoping to be able to work with F C S S. And in fact, I have connected uh, Parks and Rec and F C S S to see if they can work out a time slot where Parks and Rec can utilize that space for their meetings so that they're not meeting in the kitchen, um, especially as the hall gets busier and busier. So um, I think that was a nice concession by F C S S and they're, you know, they're excellent to work with. And yes, we want them to have a dedicated space, but we also think, while they're not utilizing it, uh, we don't want to open the, the door for this to like any group, any organization. But there is at least one and potentially two that we think could utilize that space um, and share it on a limited basis with F C S S. So that, that's why I left that particular phrase in there.
Thank you. Um, if there's no additional questions, do you have a question?
Yes, um, we did. And I don't know if this is particularly relevant to, I don't think we're gonna put this in the policy, but I had asked about the cleaning schedule.
And, uh, yes, uh, when we are working on that, actually. Um, Kathy administers the facility bookings, is actually looking to see when would be a good time. Um, because we have the same issue in the spring startup of the programs, right? And obviously, summer can be challenging because we've got a lot of outside rentals and um, it usually takes about two weeks and we'd hate to get it sort of half done and then have groups in there and then they have the other half. So, uh, we're currently exploring what that best option might look like.
Great. All right. So moving on to a motion, um, I would, I would like to make a motion for this. I would like to, um, uh, direct, uh, administration to implement the community center policy effective January first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and then I will speak to this a little bit, too. Um, I think that with this, I think that we, we have to have a starting point. And I think that we also have to consider, um, what we need to do as a community as a whole. And I think that, um, I've, I've had additional conversations with Parks and Rec, which I believe that the groups are primarily affected by this. And I think that part of their concern after, they actually, some of the members watched our last meeting um, and felt much better by just watching the meeting about like, really, what the intention behind it. Um, and knowing that, uh, with the policy, we can always revisit it, too, if things aren't working. And I think that along with that, I believe that we just need to start somewhere, but we also need to be looking at how we're um, caring for our assets and how we're working some of those costs, too, in terms of the maintenance of these buildings and things like that. Um, and, and I guess like working with our community groups. And I think that that's what you're indicating, C A O, is that the intention is really to be able to work with them appropriately, um, so that they can do the work that they want to do. But, um, also looking at this from the, the revenue component of this, that we have other people that want to utilize the space. And so with that, I think that it's, um, it's good to, to try it and, and see how it goes. And if there happens to be some things that need to come up or we need to revise the policy, then I, but then I think that we revisit it. But, um, I, I do, I think that, you know, why not? So from there, I will, um, open this up to council. And maybe what I will do is, if you'd like to speak to it, I'm just going to go down the line. Um, and again, with our new procedural bylaw, you have two opportunities to speak to this. So I will start with, um, Councilor Florence. Um, if you'd like to speak to it, you're welcome to.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I would like to speak to this. Um, just in going through this policy, um, some of the things I was seeing that this policy does not cover use of donated storage space, um, that this policy does not cover use of keys for local organizations. And it, it doesn't really reference a penalty structure or denial process if, if we don't approve the, the donated bookings or the reduced rate bookings. Um, it also doesn't, for me, address the liability to the town or to the user group, um, referencing even showing proof of insurance. I, I think what we want to avoid is, is one group dominating all the bookings um, and making sure it's a fair process for all users who, who may be taking use of a donated or reduced rate facility booking. Um, and we want to avoid users having keys and the liability of having folks accessing the halls at, at unknown times to the town. Um, and the liability of having things stored in the hall, um, both for the groups and for the town. Um, there have been a few situations recently, um, you know, that we've seen happening in town where um, folks have been offering up keys to other community groups, um, which to me is a huge risk and a huge liability. Um, and then people, you know, being able to access the hall and going in before their said time, which is impeding with other people's, um, bookings. Um, so, so that's a, that's a high-risk situation. And I, and I'm wondering how, how that risk is, is being mitigated in this policy, and I don't think it is. Um, and then for me, I would also like to see the donation process further defined and really developed under the new community services director. So that, that can be a portal for user groups or donated or reduced bookings, um, and to create a program and have the groups work closely with the town. Um, we now have a, a director of community services and hoping, and we're hoping to grow this whole pillar, um, which also comes with a bunch of events that impact the paid bookings of the hall, too. And as mentioned several times, we are still in the business of a budget and having to maintain the hall. Um, and it would be my hope that we can have the, we can be closer to having the fees paid, the fees paid for our facility, not the other way around. Um, and I do realize that some of this is covered in the policy, but I, I don't feel it is entirely. But in terms of process, how will these, um, donations or reduced bookings be decided? Donations are a council value, um, and the facility bookings fall well into admin territory. Um, but how will the, the organizations be properly vetted? Um, what if the event is run by a nonprofit but is intended to make money? Will we require proof of status from these organizations? Or will, will we require saying financial statements annually, um, in order to prove eligibility? Are we gonna collect data from these organizations and able to be able to form our own assessments each year for, for donated bookings as council sets the yearly budget? Um, and, and that's, that's kind of some of the things I've noticed. Um, as well, it, it kind of to echo what Council Caldwell said, um, I think that really balancing the revenue versus the donated bookings, um, should be something that's a big part of this conversation. And so for me right now, um, I would actually, I would like to see it come back to council at a different time with a little bit more information in it.
Thank you. Yes.
Would it be appropriate for me to respond to this before we get into the others? Because she had a very lengthy list there.
If you'd like, you're welcome to respond.
Thank you. Um, and again, oh, I think all good points. Um, it is true, storage is not dealt with in here. Uh, that's true, and it is something I thought of. Uh, I just have not been able to rationalize how to manage that. And we do have a storage issue, not only for our community groups, but sometimes ourselves as well. Um, uh, the keys, uh, has been addressed not in the policy, but in the forms. And you'll also find the insurance requirements dealt with in the rental agreements as well. So, uh, keys must be returned no later than the, the next day to the town office. Um, and again, I think you're correct. We want to reduce and minimize risk and liability when it comes to that, um, while still allowing people, you know, access to the facility as required. Uh, proof of insurance, any copy of A L C B license, et cetera, must be provided at least two days prior to any event that would fall for anybody. Um, and this is, I'm just actually looking at the donated and reduced rate application form, so it would apply there as well. Um, I'm sorry, can you, I know you're very studious and you probably got this in writing, counselor, but can you remind me what the other ones were?
Sorry, the other concerns? With, with just the, the mitigation of risk, um, for, oh, for the, for the use of donated space? Or for the, you don't, use of donated storage? Um, and then just using the community service director as a portal um, and developing the kind of like more of a program for it, and, and then providing proof of eligibility. So are, are we gonna be requiring annual statements? Um, are we going to be requiring, um, proof of, proof of, um, status? Like that, that they are a charitable organization or a not-for-profit?
Okay, thank you. So.
And I'm sorry, with that, and I guess the other thing I wanted to mention is, is I, I, although it is an admin tool, I think it would be helpful to see and to reference the booking agreements as an appendix to this policy.
I would have to look. I can't remember. They're all, they're all part and parcel of the policy. All the forms were redone to form part of this policy. So they are an appendix to these, to the policy. Um, now I have to go back and remember what else you just suggested. Um, as far as risk, uh, we certainly have covered off as far as insurance goes. The issue of storage, though, I think is a separate one. Oh, proof of, uh, proof of, uh, status. So, I, again, and this is its own creation. I've tried to define what, what a local charitable organization is. Um, could we ask for proof of status? Absolutely, we could. Um, I don't think we need to every single time, but probably annually to ensure that status has been maintained. Uh, I don't think any of those groups would have an issue with that. Uh, and it's probably good policy, right, to ensure that they are effectively local charitable organization or nonprofit. Um, so I think we can manage that as well. Uh, if you recall previously, it was the C A O that determined eligibility for donating booking, which I was super uncomfortable with. Um, I don't think myself or any of my staff should be in a position of picking like a winner and a loser. There should be a hard and fast regulation, which is why we developed this, this way, so that uh, my booking facility worker could actually approve this. And you'll notice there is, uh, an affiliation with the C A O, with a C A O's authorization. So there's a bit of a check and balance system that I've put into this particular policy. Um, is it perfect? No, it's, it's not perfect. Um, as far as dealing with the community services, um, because a lot of this is ingrained in the facility itself and the facility use, um, certainly should be involved in programming. And one of the things we talked about this morning was if a community group finds that there is a hardship being created uh, to rent the hall financially. Um, currently, I have her reviewing our community grant policy, and there might be an opportunity for a community group to use that venue to come to council for financial support, to put on those type of community events, which I think is reasonable and fair, but still allow council in that process. So short of the storage, counselor, uh, which I certainly don't disagree with, that we can maybe look at as a separate piece somewhere. Um, because it might not just be stored at the community hall, it might be at other facilities. We might have stuff at the fireball, minimum stuff in public works. Uh, you know, the, the social area at Miners Park, that kind of a thing. So uh, whether it's short or long term, uh, I think it's a valid point. But I think the rest of your concerns, we actually have covered and can cover administratively when we're dealing with applications. So status, for instance, uh, if council would like to see any financial statements for donated use, um, I think we could make that request as, as part of our requirement for proof of status. So I think we can manage it through this. Um, I could also add a clause that says all groups using facilities that are donated or reduced rate, reduced rate permits, um, must provide council with them their latest financial statements, if you think that's necessary. But I do think the rest we can probably cover. And I think I will say also, probably much better than we are right now. So while this might not be perfect, I think it's, it's, uh, probably nine steps further up than we were previously, which I think is a step in the right direction.
Great. All right, I'm going to move to Council Podry, then we'll go to Council Caldwell.
Thank you very much, Tina. I, yeah, I think there's maybe some adjustments that could be made, but I, I do like getting a place in for the new year, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Counselor Caldwell, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you. I think the reason why this looks so much better than anything that we've had is that we've had a practice and then we've had a policy and the two have been very separate. But the practice has been, over the last few years, to provide supports for our, all of our community groups that want to provide programming for our community. Typically, a municipality takes on all of the responsibilities for providing programming to their residents. Caldwell does not do that. And we haven't done that for, for many, many years. And I'll give a little historical context here. We've always relied on our volunteer groups to provide programming to our community members. When I came on council at that point, there was a council that didn't provide a lot of support for our community groups and so there was really nothing available in our community. The R C M P had identified our youth as youth at risk because there was nothing in our community that was happening. We had a council that failed to support any of our groups. And so it was years of battling really hard and, and trying to bring in good research to show the importance of sort of celebrating that leadership, building those leaders, building those community groups, supporting them in any way that we can to ensure that they provide that programming, while we still did not. Right? So I just, and I, and I'm just saying this with complete frankness and honesty. So we do have, we have throughout the years had a, a number of different wonderful volunteer groups that have kind of done really great and then have just sort of faded away because that's what happens with volunteer groups over a period of time. We need to make sure that whatever decisions that we make, that we continue to support those volunteer groups. And while I understand that our proposed eighteen thousand dollars of proposed revenue last year in twenty twenty-three, we don't have the actuals. This was just still our proposed budget amount that we would receive in revenues. I, I recognize that that is a reasonable number. It's not a fantastic number. It's a reasonable number. I would like to see the actual costs associated with janitorial fees as well as utilities, as well as all the costs associated. When we used to have all of those numbers put together, I could then provide the argument for why it's really important that we ensure that those community groups that are providing programs for our residents have access to the community center, that they have our support to be able to continue doing that. Right? So, as I said right off the hop, this is miles better than a policy that we never had or that we never practiced. But an actual underground practical application, it is going to be heavy-handed because that wasn't our practice. Our practice was, over the past number of years, was to support community groups in their access. And so right now we have community groups that will go in there and they will run their events on the Saturday. They'll do their fundraising events. They'll go in there on the Friday nights and they'll have their movie nights. And I'm not sure what that's going to do to them. If, if we, if we say that they can still be bumped, and please you remember that it was a request to deal with that that brought us to the table, was how can we support our community groups to not get bumped? But what we're saying within this policy is we're saying they still can be if there's a weekend-long booking. But you're saying we give them sixty days' notice.
Correct. Which I think is fair and reasonable. It was the way I could object with a deal with it. And one of the re, one of the, and if I might, one of the reasons and challenges I face with this is like our community groups are very industrious and I think it was super credit for being well organized. Because I actually have all the requests for those bookings already on my desk.
Wonderful.
So I already know when they want to book them, which allows us the opportunity to say, hey, you know, we have a wedding booked already on the thirteenth of July, for instance, so we're going to have to move that third Friday movie night booking. But with enough notice that it, it shouldn't be a major issue and I say that guesquely, I suppose. I will also say that even like a Friday night booking, one of the realities we face, if we do a one-hour booking of, say, the Coop Room, the money we bring in in rent often doesn't cover the cleaning costs post-event. So it is still, there's still a donation in that kind of terms. And the same thing with the Friday night event. And, and we realize, you know, the people, that our groups are very good at leaving all in good condition. Our local groups are typically, but we still have external cleaning requirements outside of what they do. So, yeah, it is a bit of a balancing act.
It is. It is a balancing act and I, and I, and you know, and whenever we're looking at doing our, our policies or our bylaws, I always have in the back of my mind's exception planning. And so if we write something that says our intention is, although we say exceptions.
Okay, Council, I'm just going to remind us that we've adopted a new procedural bylaw, which limits us to two minutes per person.
Have I, have I passed two minutes?
Yes, more than doubled.
I probably passed her two minutes.
And so I just wanted to bring us back to that and I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you for that.
So we're just gonna, we're, we have another round, so you do have another opportunity to speak. I'll just use my opportunity right now to speak to this. I think that within this, just to address a couple of things that I did hear. I did hear about the storage component and I, I do agree that that is a piece of this. However, I took the clause of exclusive use over any part of the center to include that. And so for me, that that is, that is covered within it, but it becomes more of an administrative thing as to how we actually do that. I don't know what that necessarily needs to be within the policy. In terms of the Community Services Director, I think that that is much more operational. And I, and I, in my opinion, I leave that to administration to determine what that actually looks like in terms of how it would affect this policy. I don't think that it needs to be within this. And I, I stand by what I said before about this idea of it's somewhere for us to start. I don't know if this is necessarily, I don't think this is penalizing anybody. I think it's a new way of doing things and we're looking at the greater good of the town and of everything like that. I think we need to start and then receive feedback. The groups were given the opportunity to provide additional feedback. I spoke into them and I, I believe that this in its current iteration will do what it needs to do for them. And if it, if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll hear from them and we can revisit it at that point in time. So I will then go back through our line here again. So, Counselor Florence, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, and, and I appreciate, or yes, I do actually, sorry. I, I would like to add more. I appreciate the robust conversation and, and the answers that are coming out from this. And I think, I, I think that in terms of the storage space, I don't believe it's covered under that one line. I think there's much more of an element of liability and risk to this. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that come back. If, if it had to include the minors memorial policy, that's fine. And I would agree that we do need to get this passed to get it started. However, in terms of the, the feedback from groups, I think this is another area where we've been elected to do what we do and represent people and, and I don't know if we necessarily need to hinge everything on feedback from, from community groups. And we need to do our very best to balance this with revenues. So at this point, I won't put in any additional motions, but I would probably be making a motion in the future in regards to some of the stuff we talked about.
Great, thank you. Move down to Counselor Potry?
No, I think this is a great step in the right direction, like I originally intended. And I think the C O provisions has addressed a lot of complicated issues with this policy. No, it's not exactly perfect yet, I think, and I don't know if it ever will be, but I think it's a great step in the direction.
Thank you. Counselor Caldwell?
Thank you. Thank you for that. I again have to reiterate, I'm sorry, I just got completely distracted with the whole storage conversation. I, I actually, as I read through this, I feel that it, it does act to, to penalize certain community groups. I think that if we're having conversations about taking away storage, if we are reducing people's ability to use the facility to provide programming for our community, I think that this does act in a manner that is somewhat penalizing to our community groups. And so I would like to see us, well, I appreciate the work that went into this and I appreciate that it's made it a lot more concise and cohesive document. I would like to see a, a little bit more being available for our community groups. And I also would like us to pay attention to the fact that in succession planning, we have to know that when we're setting people up to always request exceptions in order to do the things that we know that they do, we don't know what the future is going to hold for that. So, and that, and I'm talking specifically about the, the Friday night events. We're, we're setting this up so that people have to come in and request exceptions each time in order to have a movie in there on the Friday night. From my read on this, it says that there's no bookings past six P M on Friday, although exceptions may be made.
Donated bookings.
The no donated bookings. So we have a community group that provides a free movie night with free popcorn and free activities for, for families from our community. And they can't get that space any longer. They currently do, right? But they won't be able to, under this new bylaw, be able to get that space as a.
As a donation.
As a donation.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And so, I know that I did put one provision in there as an exception. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to review it since this was pre-holidays.
Have I passed two minutes?
Yep.
Have we got a timer set up?
Well, we'll just wait for the response.
So under donated booking, oh yes, so the exception I had provided was for a, for instance, a Friday, Saturday fundraising event. That if a group booked a Friday and Saturday, that we could include the Friday night as part of the donated booking for Friday and that the only rental fee for that event would be the fifty percent fee for the Saturday booking. So they wouldn't have to request that. It would, it's already in the policy. And that's under donated bookings B two.
Thank you. Sorry. So then the read then would not, that would not be provided available, even with the exception for a Friday night family movie night? For a donated booking?
Yeah, so that doesn't cover a movie night. That's a Friday, Saturday booking, that exception. And again, this is council's policy, right? One of the, if council wanted to outlook donated bookings on Friday night, I'm fine with that. The reason I left it out was I didn't, the challenge with the donated booking, removing a potential weekend booking. So typically a weekend booking involves a Friday night for decorating, whatever, setting up, that kind of a thing. So, but could it be changed? Absolutely, it could be. I still give that two months' notice. Right?
Alright, thank you. So again, for, for me, I'm just going to go back to this and just reiterate, I do believe that the exclusive use does consider that component, especially when you consider all the other cases here too about returning the keys. With that, if there was no exclusive use given to any group or anybody, there would be no reason for them to have keys to get into the building. Therefore, that would, I think, mitigate the risk that comes along with that because they'd be following the key policy that goes along with this. And I, and I do think that that is reasonable, given the situation. I, I understand that we want to support our community groups. And I, I believe that we are, but I believe too, as, as a town, that we need to consider some of our needs as well. Indicated, I think, in a meeting that I had with C O that we are, also have our own storage challenges too. And especially as we have the Community Services Director come on board, I'm assuming that we will have more potential things coming on board and we do need to look at our own storage components that go along with that. And just knowing our C O and how he works with our community groups and our community members, he would work with them to ensure that they did not feel penalized by, by looking at another option for them so that they can continue to function as they are. So with that, I am now going to just reset my motion here. So it's moved by me, that council direct administration to implement the community center policy effective January first, twenty twenty-four. I'm now going to call the vote. So all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, the motion is defeated.
So if I might, I now have to actually deny the request for the donated bookings for a fundraising event because your current policy does not allow them. Which is what I was trying to explain. So, what would council like me to do with this?
When is a group booked, isn't it? Whatever group that is.
I have all the requests. I'm trying to be great now, but last year they were all approved in January prior to my arrival. But according to the policy, they shouldn't have been necessarily, so I don't want to just want to figure out the best way to approach this now.
So I, I suppose fundamentally that there's a very many different views on, on this. Are we having a committee of the whole this month?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yes.
Can we bring this back to committee of the whole? And have more of a conversation there?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody? Um, so I, I will make that motion that we bring back the community center policy to committee of the whole on, so January ninth?
January ninth.
For, for the discussion. Is there any questions on my motion? Uh, alright, does anyone really want to speak to this? If not, are you doing want to speak to it?
Well, I, I most, yeah, I know, I know problems with the motion, I guess. It's just in, in, with having some of those discussion items from those who are opposed to it, I, I think it would be nice to have the opportunity to address some of those really, right? So if there are concerns, it would be, like, I think we've heard some of them from Counselor Florence and Counselor Caldwell, I guess, but yeah, I guess really, really just needs to be addressed them, that's all I would say, so.
So with that, would anybody else like to speak to this motion? We'll just go down this first.
I, if I, if I might be able to speak to how administration responded through the merit administration, are we able to hold off on the refusals?
Yeah, no.
Of the donation requests?
I haven't done anything till we had a new policy in place, when it was in process, but this is making it a little more challenging as we're getting hall booking and I'm seeing overlaps, right? So just doing our best to navigate around it, that's all. As I said, at least I have the fee structure in place, which is one step. And, you know, I think it is important that all, that everyone's on board with that. And I will say that I played this, I played this sort of a ping pong game with a similar policy in a different community. And, and I think we went through four or five iterations and there is no perfect place to be. It depends on your ideological perspective, right? What's right for one is not right for another and that's just the difference in political perspectives. So we just, we try our best to try and find a happy middle ground and get something that is at least workable and something we look forward to. So, yeah, the first of the conversation Tuesday.
Great, thank you. So with this, I, I do appreciate what Counselor Potry has said. For those of you who are opposed, it would be good if we could get that information together about what you're hoping to see or what you've like addressed, just so that administration can prepare that so that we can have a robust conversation at that point in time. If there's no further discussion on this, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor?
In favor.
Uh, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, so keep moving through our agenda here. We have no committee reports. I do believe we received one council report that did come in from Dapine Mayor, so thank you to him for doing that. He is away this evening, but we, you can read that in this within our package as well. And then we'll move right along here to, to correspondence. So I do see that we have a motion that Counselor Potry would like to. So I do see that we have um, a motion that uh, uh, Council Potry would like to bring forth with one of the pieces of correspondence. So I'm just going to turn that over to you, Council Potry, and this is regarding the municipal affairs. Um, letter of assessment. Is that correct? Or what am I looking at here?
This, this is in regards to the um, drought information.
Oh yes, thank you.
Uh, sharing. So it's item thirteen point four on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
It was letter to the, the, the municipal officials. So, um, as you know, that, I, um, in seeing this letter and I think you know, everyone's been talking about in the community that, um, oh, the rent rewards have been low and aren't they gonna do anything about it? Well, now's the year to do something about it. So, um, I appreciate, um, administration providing some, from looking into this, um, providing some comment that we typically follow along with the um, leverage, our restrictions, but there of course is make the more we can do. So um, to that effect, I would like to uh, move that um, council refer the development of a drought mitigation plan to administration for the town corners to address drought mitigation measures recommended in the December twenty twenty two letter for the Ministry of Environment and Protected Areas. And for administration, administration to present the drought mitigation plans to council before the end of March twenty twenty four.
Great. Um, so Council Potry has made the motion, um, that he just said.
It's very long.
Um. Is there, would you, would you like to speak to it anymore, or?
I, I, I just, I, well, I, I kind, I kind of.
Turn.
Maybe a little. I, I think that um, we as a community. I don't, it would be good to have a formalized plan so that residents know, like, at this level, we need to, you know, do this, at this level, we need to do that. And not just rely on leverage to do things for us, I guess, right? So, um. I, I, I think it would be appropriate, you know, one of the, one of the things that we did when we designed the spray park, let's say, is we, we we put in a recirculating system so that we can hopefully operate it, you know, when we have dry years, for example. But what, what's that look like in terms of our town and how, how can we operate that? Like, if, if we're like, you know, drought this year, what does that look like for, like, for a spray park, for example, or lawn water, right? So it would be good to um, really have a look at that, see what thresholds we're looking at and how we can and, and, and so that we can have a collective decision really about where our service levels need to be, right? So.
Great, thank you. Um, I realize I did not follow my order. Um, so I'm just going to, to make sure.
You must say anything.
I know, I was like, oh, I forgot those parts. But I'm just gonna make sure, um, with, with the rest of council, do you have any questions on, on the motion that Council Potry put forward? No?
Well, I might be able to add a little background because based on your email this morning, um, we did have the city actually send us their drought plan. Uh, now it's from twenty fourteen, but it's still quite relevant, which I'll forward to council. I think what I was trying to point out this morning was that because Lethbridge supplies not only us, but Coleridge, a number of other municipalities in southern British Water. I think it's appropriate that we have a consistent approach to dealing with that. So the resident of Coleridge isn't getting fined a thousand dollars for something that someone in the city last year was getting fined fifty dollars for. And we're creating a sound level playing field. Um, so uh, they do have multiple stages of that particular drought plan and different restriction levels, uh, so it's very well laid out. Um, they also provide this, so like a two page kind of summation of the whole thing. So it might be just a matter of reviewing if we have any policy or bylaw that references penalties under those type of circumstances. If not, it's probably a matter of destroying one together for that. But would highly recommend ultimately that we do, that all of us as water users, I mean, from the city system, that we apply that approach consistently throughout, so. Oh, good, there.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm now going to um, ask council, we'll just go down the line again, um, if you would like to speak to this motion, uh, Council Potry started, so we'll start with um, Council Paul Paul.
Um, no.
No, okay.
I, I support the motion.
Great, thank you. Uh, Council Florence, would you like to speak to this at all?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Um, I appreciate Deputy Mayor, or, nope, Council, Council Potry bringing this forward. Um, it's, it's, this is a big issue and it's something that's quite concerning, um, this past year and in coming years, and we've, we've not seen a drought in a while. Um, and so I support it coming back to council, um, for further discussion, even for um, for transparency to the public and to take them along with us and for really in-depth view of, of what we can do as a community. Um, and so as much as I'm not looking forward to having this discussion about drought, I think it's important that it comes back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and I will just say that I think this is, this is good that we're looking at this now. Um, because we know that this could potentially be an issue coming into the, you know, this springtime. So thank you for bringing this forward. Um, again, with procedural bylaw, we have one additional time to, to speak. So I will go to Council Potry if there's anything you'd like to say. Council Paul Paul?
Thank you.
Uh, Council Florence? No, and myself, I have nothing else. Um, if there's nothing else, I'm now going to call a vote. All those in favor?
In, in favor of what? Sorry. Oh, okay, yes.
Um, as an option. Sorry, I, I was supposed to read that out. I forgot my hand. I didn't, I didn't do it at all.
Bear with me. I, I can, I've had a hard time hearing, so I was like, did I miss it? Sorry.
No, I just didn't read it out. Um, I just wanted to, I didn't see your hands. In favor?
In favor.
In favor? Yes, okay. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to uh, move into closed, yes?
Could, could, I, I did have a question on one of the items of correspondence, if that's all right?
Yes, of course.
Um, so uh, with, regarding the letter that we received, uh, for the transition for L G F F. Um, M S I to L G F F, um. There was some concern as Scott and I were texting, um, about the transition period and if we would have um, any um, M S I cap, uh, money left over that maybe at risk of being um rescinded or like taking back that problem. So, um, I was curious if uh, administration has looked into this and if, um, if there is any risk of us losing funding, potentially losing funding, so.
If I might then through the mayor. Um, so this was brought to the town's attention back in October of twenty twenty two and again, September, October of this year. So, um, by the time I took the opportunity to speak to our corporate services director and uh, asked the same question basically. Um, I have no intention of returning any grant monies. Uh, we've obviously, I'm doing ways we could spend them, but I did have him put a brief together because I wasn't sure how long we'd be in that conversation tonight. So. Um, by the end of twenty twenty three, town must have spent five hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars to ensure our two thousand and seven to twenty eighteen allocations were fully expended through M S I capital. Um, again, we were made aware of that requirement in October twenty twenty two. And administration used that information when they prepared the twenty twenty three capital budget. So the wetland project, we used approximately eight hundred and ninety thousand of M S I. Um, which will satisfy the requirement to expend those previous year allocations. The public workshop was additions two hundred and ninety thousand, also funded through M S I. Um, and the sandbox salt attachment was sixty thousand as well. So administration anticipates spending all outstanding M S I funds by the end of the year, will not be required to return any funds to the province. Excellent.
Excellent. Is there any other questions about any of the correspondence?
Yes, I.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, um, just to comment also on the L G F F capital. Um, because with our, it, it talks about, um, in the payment of the twenty twenty four L G F F. So it talks about the capital funding, um, if it's. So our twenty twenty three M S I capital is our allocation or whatever's left was, I thought it was one thousand or one million seven hundred and seventy five and some change. Um, but with our twenty twenty four allocation being less or, or it's slated for, I think it's five sixty, if I'm correct. So what I, what I'm reading from this letter is that we won't actually receive our twenty twenty four allocation unless we notify um, municipal affairs that we need payment. Um, and I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and I'm just going off of our budget documents for, um, that we just passed to get the numbers. Um, so the allocation that was left over from twenty twenty three M S I um, and the projections for our projects for twenty twenty four is, is that one million seven, um, hundred thousand seventy five and five hundred and fifty two. And then our L G F F allocation is five hundred and fifty, um, and then one oh four for twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So. Sorry.
Yeah, I know, uh, certainly finish if you've got more and then I'll.
No, it just talks about the payment of the funds. So it says in addition to be eligible for that funding. Um, the, the M S I carry forward funding at the end of twenty twenty three cannot exceed the twenty twenty four L G F F F cap, capital allocation. For example, if the local government's twenty twenty four L G F F is two fifty and its twenty twenty three M S I capital carry forward is four hundred, uh, the local government will not receive its twenty twenty four L G F F allocation, and we are in that situation.
Oh, I don't have the regulation in front of me, but I'll certainly have to look into it. And I did actually uh, go through it this afternoon. And there are some new regulations surrounding it, uh, including that phrase that they use. Um, if the municipality requires the funds, which I kind of found very odd and it's not typical granting regulation. So there, uh, uh, counselor, I'm gonna have to look into it in a little more detail. Obviously, uh, we are where we are in L G F, because those regulations are very fresh, so. And as you know, we just got the allocation statement, December fifteenth, so. Um, I'll certainly look into it and we can respond in time.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I think that, um, I understand the province intent to focus on the measuring outcomes and the infrastructure management. Um, and I, and I think it's intended so people don't pile up their capital funding, um, for M S I, right? But I think that, that, yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a few problems with this. Um, but, but the problem is the cost of the capital project far exceeds the amount given. And so that's why people don't use their capital, right? Um, but it would, I think we're in a kind of a scary position if, if it's, if it keeps going like this and, and if, if we need to keep proving that. So I'm looking forward to it coming back.
Yeah, and, and you're absolutely correct, especially when the province, if I might, near Montana, uh, did a significant capital reduction over the last couple of years. Um, most communities would, you know, use that as a buildup for larger projects as opposed to putting in small projects. So the, the province sort of set us up for that unfortunately. Um, I did do a quick review this afternoon of our capital budget for twenty twenty four, and you'll see there's about three million dollars there. And two point six million in the above, which is allocated to forty fifth Avenue Storm, so we're exten, or Storm Extension. Um, so. Uh, I haven't reviewed those guidelines in depth, but I certainly will and we'll see if we can get some clarity on your questions.
Uh, Council Florence, are, is that all good?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I did want to pull out other correspondence. Did you want me to wait to do that? Okay, I was just hoping, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to talk about, um, actually both the letter, the, the, the minister approval for the Village of Sterling and then the municipal affairs um, assessment model review too. So that's thirteen point two and thirteen point three. Um, so with thirteen point two, I just wanted to say that, um, it, I think it's, it was actually, it was kind of, I was like, why are we getting this? Was this a mistake? So I was taking the time to really read through it. Um, but it's, I'm assuming it's because we fall under the same, um, Barren, Zurica, Warner, F C S S service area. Um, but this to me, it looks like they've received funding for a needs assessment for their entire organization. So two questions come up for me. Will we, we see the needs result, um, assessment in our community? Um, and two, it, it's curious that the government would fund this and also explicitly state in the letter that it does not um, signify broader provincial support or any recommendation or outcome that may come of the project. So um, I'm not sure where this is, where this was going or why the province funded it. And, and I thought it was interesting that it was forwarded to us as well. Um, and hopefully we see something from it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if I might, then again, to, to mayor, um, this was actually a project that, uh, town of Sterling approached, I believe. Most community members are involved with the, uh, our, our Chief of Warner F C S S. And I'm fairly certain the council, this council actually passed a motion to support that grant application. So we're actually a sign, will be a signatory to that grant. That's why we have this letter. Yeah.
And, and we, but we didn't actually, um, they submitted it before we actually voted on it, right?
I believe that was correct, yes. But we did actually pass a motion, yeah.
We did, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Um, and your, your other one, uh, Council Florence?
Um, so the, um, the letter from Municipal Affairs is talking about the assessments, um, model review and, and how, what's been done with phase one in the steering committee and that they're going to start looking um, at the assessment model review, um, and what changes might be made. And so I just think it's something we need to keep an eye on and stay engaged with any changes being made and something to keep on our radar.
Great, thank you. Um, if, if we're okay for correspondence, um, again, we, we, with the change, I, I believe this is with our procedural bylaw, we now actually do the motion for the foie verve before we go in, into our closed session. So, um, can I request that somebody make a motion to go into closed session?
I can.
Sure.
I move that council, pursuant to section sixteen seventeen nineteen twenty one and twenty nine of Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, enter closed session at seven thirty P M to consider items fifteen point one, members at large appointment to committees at council, and fifteen point two, committee schedules, fifteen point three, C P A shared services agreement, and fifteen point four, the F C S S agreement.
All right, is there um, any questions on this motion? If there's none, um, Council Potry has made this motion. Um, would anybody like to speak to the motion? If not, I will have a question. All in favor?
In favor.
That's carried. Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion to enter open session at 9:00 p.m., please?
I move we enter council enter open session at 9:00 p.m.
Great, so Council Quotry has made that motion. Is there any questions on the motion? If not, I'll just call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried, thank you. And then we have some motions coming out of closed session. The first is from Council Caldwell.
I move the council appoint its members at large to the following committees of council. Kim Horan to the Community Celebration Committee. Lori Harrison to the Community Enrichment Advisory Committee. Irene Hildebrand to the Community Housing Advisory Committee. And Lori Harrison and Travis Grindel to the Weblands Advisory Committee.
Thank you. So Council Caldwell has made this motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Would anybody like to speak to this motion?
I will. I just want to express my appreciation to the committee members that have put their names forward. And I think this is going to be an exciting opportunity for all of us.
Thank you. So Council Caldwell has made the motion to appoint these members at large. I have a call question, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried, thank you. And then our next motion is by Council Quotry regarding the CPO shared services agreement.
I move that council direct administration proceed with the CPO shared services agreement with the village of Barrens effective for the January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. So Council Quotry has made this motion. Is there any questions on the motion? Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
I'll just maybe say a few comments that I think it's great that we can work together with neighboring municipalities like Barrens to share costs for these types of services and still provide effective service within our community.
Thank you. All right, I will call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried. And then finally, we have the FCSS agreement for motion from Council Caldwell.
I move the council direct administration to proceed with the memorandum of understanding for use of the Ted Erickson Room in the community center between Barrens Yerkes Warner Family and Community Support Services and the town of Coldhurst for the January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026 term.
All right, so Council Caldwell has made this motion. Is there any, I forgot to ask if there are any questions. But there we go, any questions? No, okay. Moving on, would anyone like to speak to the motion?
I think it speaks very solidly, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll call the question, all in favor?
In favor.
That's carried, thank you. And then we will adjourn at